All right, good evening. If we could stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. Actually, we're going to start with our recognition of our 2019 retirees. So Jack and I will go over here.
Yeah, come on up. Sure. At the same time, we're going to have you talk them together. So I just wanted to say a little bit, we have our big retirement ceremony on Thursday night, and in preparation for that, one of the things I did is I asked all the retirees some questions about their time in the schools. Yeah?
Oh, no.
You know? And one of the questions I asked is what's changed most in your time in the profession? And all of them said the same thing, it's been the technology. And a lot has changed. You think about it, most of the folks here have been in the profession 30 years or more. You go back 30 years in time, it was chalkboards. There were no smartboards, there were no PCs, there were no cellphones, there was no internet. Another question I asked them is what are you going to miss the most? And a lot of them got choked up when I asked this question because the response was always the same. I'm going to miss the kids, and I'm going to miss the people I work with. And that's a universal truth in the work that we do. It's about the relationships that we have with others. And on behalf of the board in this district, I want to thank you all for your service because you really are going to be missed here. We appreciate all that you've given to the Monroe schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So first, we have Pam Benedict, jockey hollow teacher, 22 years.
And next, we have Kim Green, jockey hollow teacher, 39 years. Deb Kivachi, Monroe Elementary School principal, 17 years. Deb Lupo, fun hollow teacher, 19 years. Dave Hollowell, and jockey hollow teacher, 43 years.
They forgot me?
No, we didn't forget you. Eileen Panis, jockey hollow teacher.
Always teasing.
And I'm hoping that all of you get the chance to come to our big celebration on Thursday night at the Water View where we're going to celebrate the service given by all these wonderful people. So thank you very much.
Thank you. It doesn't not mean sit down, so we will... All right, now we are going to, so Jack and I will not sit down.
Correct.
Recognize our student recognitions. And first up, we're going to recognize our National Merit Scholarship recipients.
And Dr. Greenwood's going to lead this with us.
Alrighty.
Good. Alright. So I have a couple of scholars here. Sean Murray, Alex Moreno. First, I'll start with Alex. He was, earned a National Merit Scholarship commended student, so I'm going to read exactly what it is because it's pretty impressive. National Merit commended students are recognized for their exceptional academic potential, as demonstrated by their outstanding performance in the PSAT. Commended students place among the top 5% of the more than 1.6 million students who entered the competition by taking the PSAT their junior year. That's impressive, very impressive. So great job.
Congratulations.
One more. Perfect. And Sean, and also Julia Andronowitz. And Julia is visiting UConn, accepted student state, so she couldn't be here. But both Sean and Julia, from the pool of 50,000 commended students, the highest 16,000 scores are named semifinalists, are eligible to represent the National Merit Scholarship program. They represent less than 1% of the nation's graduates. And Sean is one of those, so congratulations. And I should also say, since I'm here, that Sean also is our valedictorian this year.
You got pictures?
Alright.
Alright, thank you very much.
What was the story works, right?
Correct.
Alright, so next up, we are going to recognize our story works recipients.
And for that one, if we could have Eliana Asenter and Grace Kearney, the two of you can come on up here, please.
Mrs. Herman.
And this is another wonderful honor to be recognized here. So Eliana and Grace were among 3,500 students that submitted their characters to be considered within the Scholastic Book Award competition. And this was within books to be written by scholastic authors?
The "I Survived" series author was asking for ideas, and 3,500 students submitted their ideas, and two of the winners out of 75 were these two.
Pretty amazing.
This is her second award this year and her third award this year.
Excellent, so two out of 3,500.
Two out of 3,500, yes.
Pretty amazing. So great job to them, and we want to present these certificates to you for your excellent work. Eliana? And Grace. Great job, all of you.
Alright, thank you. Everybody is welcome to stay, but if you'd like to leave, feel free. This is your time to go. We are moving on to item number four, which is our executive session, where we'll be discussing the superintendent's contract. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? Thank you. Jerry, do I have a second? Thank you. Shannon, all in favor? Great. We will be in recess for probably about 15 minutes while we just do the contract. And we will We will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve as presented? Thank you. Jerry, do I have a second? Thank you. Shannon, any discussion on that? Alright, hearing none. All in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. Do we have anybody that has reports this evening?
No.
Alright, we will move on then to public participation. Anybody? Alrighty, we will move on to the report of the superintendent then.
Alright, thank you very much. First, we have the financial report. And Frank, do you want to walk us through that, please, if you would?
Certainly.
Yes.
The board received previously the financial report dated May 31st. And what this is, is the report of our financial conditions. And as I noted in the report, there are a couple of bumps in the road, and specifically dealing with health insurance and special ed are two of the major drivers of the looming deficits in your account. My two-page report does go in and explain some of the key features that we found in regard to the financial condition, and I highlighted some of the accounts. We are working on this issue. Superintendent, myself, have met now with the Board of Finance, the Town Council, and town officials, looking at the problems that were occurring in our financial report. And then internally, in the finance office now, we're closing out purchase orders, releasing some of the encumbrances, working to try and bring the board within its budget by June 31st. So the superintendent will certainly be keeping you apprised over the next three to four weeks' time left in our fiscal year. That concludes my report.
Any questions for Frank? Thank you, Frank. And next, special education updates. Kay, you want to come on up, if you would? And Darlene?
I'm...
No. Okay, by herself? Alright. Yeah, you want to start first, and then I'll chime in on the efficiencies piece?
So since May 1st, there's been no big changes. We have identified new students, but they will be in districts, so be kind of encumbered into the sources that are already here. We are still doing PPTs, annual reviews from now until June, so if there are any changes, I'll be reporting back in August at that point. But at this point, there are no major changes from May 1st to now. So that's good news.
In or out?
In or out. So, transportation, we had one thing, I believe Jack shared in a Friday letter to you guys, that's the only transportation change that's happened since May 1st.
And then, on the efficiencies side, we had a chance to go to CES. Jerry and Ellen and I went, and Joe and Kay, to take a look at that facility and their programming. Had a real good visit, got a chance to see everything in action, various aspects of facility. Alan and Jerry, did you guys want to share anything about the visit at all?
No, I mean, they had a comprehensive program in place to meet a variety of needs. And I think the gentleman that took us on the tour explained that it's, you know, that they're more cost efficient than some of the other outplacement agencies, which is interesting, because I've been at a lot of those places, but CES definitely had the most to offer. So I was a little surprised that parents wouldn't choose CES when given the option.
And I think what was interesting is CES, and let me know if I'm saying this wrong, they're one of the only schools that is not à la carte. When you pay for your child, it covers everything. Whereas a lot of the other resks, according to what I had heard, have an à la carte.
Right. Related services end up being additional costs.
And I don't know if it was resk, Jerry, or if it's other, like, private schools.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you. I wasn't sure.
No, no, I think the resk are all the same. It's a tuition, and then you get the services. I think other schools do the à la carte.
Okay, thank you. I didn't want to say that wrong.
So we learned a lot, and was, I think, overall, very positive.
It was an awesome, awesome morning.
So in terms of the options that are out there for our outplacements, really among the most cost effective.
Matter of fact, Jack, it was so awesome, you did invite Chip and Mike to come here one evening, yes?
Correct. Matter of fact, I put that in a week in review. They're both on board about coming for a fall visit. Any meeting, I mentioned this to Donna too, so we can set them up for a board meeting in the fall to come and talk directly with us about their services too.
Awesome.
And what is, like, the difference in cost between CES and, I don't want to name a place, but...
Okay, we won't name a place. But other places...
Yes, other places.
It varies. I have some that are over 100,000. I have some that are in the 80s. Right now, I want to say that CES is between 50 and 60, but I would have to double check that. I don't have that in front of me, so I don't want to...
Yeah, I think...
But it ranges between 30,000 and 200,000.
I mean, like I said, it's really interesting, because I've been to a lot of private places, and I've never seen a facility as comprehensive.
Oh, God.
And as CES. And I was, you know, it's impressive, and...
It's also a public school, so they do follow a lot of the same types of things that we do as a public school, which makes it nice.
I'm surprised that it's, you know, our parents wouldn't choose it.
It's comprehensive, but it's lower cost.
Yeah.
Correct.
Much more, I don't know if I can...
And are we looking at that as an option, I'm guessing?
I have, the majority of my outplacements are CES.
The other suggestion that was made while we were there is Chip DeMay, who's the executive director of CES, had said that one of the legislative acts that they were hoping to get through at some point was to have families consider that first, as, you know, a requirement before we look to private. And so I have initiated dialogue with JP about that, and it's something he's going to keep in his folder for future year consideration with the state legislators to see if that's something we can get in place. Because there's great services there, they're doing a great job with our kids, and they're doing it cost effectively. So...
I mean, there are still students that wouldn't fit the profile. I mean, that's the other thing. I don't want to say that everyone should go to CES. There are certain kids that don't fit that profile based on their needs.
Exceptions, but you have a primary and then an exception.
So that's one of the things we're working on in terms of efficiencies. The paraprofessional study, we're still working on that. One of the things we've done is we talked within the, with the principals about having a common schedule within our elementaries, so our comparisons of those schedules will be easier. So we're continuing to work on that. That work will continue into the summer. And then as we get through that, we'll definitely share outcomes with that with the board. And then lastly, in terms of efficiencies, I spoke briefly with Jeff Kitching today from Ed Advance, and that work continues to move forward. They're hoping to get a meeting at the end of June with the superintendents that are involved in this consortium for regional special education services. And they're getting to a point where they're ready to start to have some dialogue about costs and assembling this together, and specific site. And my hope is that as this digs deeper, it will engage, you know, some of our town individuals as well, town representatives, because it's got some great potential to be able to use some available facility space and hopefully create some programming that's needed and is cost effective.
And this will be, obviously, for kids with significant needs.
Right. What they've done is they had all the special ed directors in Ed Advance and CES complete a spreadsheet, completely anonymous, of the kinds of programming that we have for all of our students. And what they're doing is they're looking at what is the common denominator amongst all the districts, so that if we were to create a program, it would be one that would address the most needs amongst all districts, so that there would be a really, a very efficient economy of scale. So that's what the next step in the conversation would be about. Any questions on that?
Jack, is there anything that we could do to help you move that along, to push that? I know it's, you know, tough getting other superintendents together, but being a priority for us, if there's anything we can help with, let us know.
I appreciate it, Dave, yeah. At this point, I think that meeting occurring with the superintendents will be critical. And then there's also some discussions related to facilities that will be really important. And I think that once we get to that point, I'll need to talk further with the board about some options there.
Yeah.
Alright. Okay. And then, school enrollment, I've just kept the board appraised of where we are with enrollment at the elementary level. Not a lot of change since last time. I talked with both Bruce and Kelly today, just to make sure the numbers that we have there are accurate. So with the two places we've been watching, at Monroe L, the third grade, we have one class of 24 and one of 25 going into the summer. That has remained stable. There hasn't been much movement there over the past weeks, if not months. And then at Stepney L, we did have one student move out, so again, not a lot of movement. There could be possibly one in, so not much change. It's a 23, 23, and 22 for the first grades there going into next year. So those are the two spots that we continue to watch, but again, not a lot of movement since our last meeting. And then our 2020 rates and fees, I'm going to hand that over to Joe and Frank to walk us through that document.
Do I start, Frank?
Alan? Alan, yes.
I don't know if Alan wants to address the cafeteria fees first?
Sure.
Yep.
Alan, you want to come on up and join us for this? So this is Alan Dean from Sedexo.
Evening, everybody.
Hello, good evening.
How are you?
So this is just looking at the cafeteria prices for, for next year.
So we, Horacio put together essentially what, based on some of the past years and the strategies that were employed over the past years on what to look at for pricing for next year. And we looked at two areas. One was the high school. We've been in this off-program mode, contracted for three years at the high school. It's worked out very well. There's been no price increase there in those three years, so we felt that it was time to have a modest price increase at the high school, for the most part, across the board. And then some smaller increases at the elementary and at the middle school. I know the CPI was set about 3%, 3.5% for food outside the house in the Northeast. And looking at some of the similar districts, we felt that some of the pricing that was proposed, and Horacio can talk to it, mostly because he orchestrated a lot of it.
Yeah, Steph proposed mainly because of the increase of product that's going on. But the elementary, I think, is the one that could, I asked for a 10% increase, but that could stay if it's, if everybody feels that to go through the exact round number, $3.00, it might be too much to sound, maybe go to, I even suggest go 3.95, 2.95, just that way, it also looks better, sounds better. It's not exactly $3.00, but still would help with some of the cost rising in the products. And in the middle school, same thing, mainly just for product increase. And some of the things that we want to look into the future for growth, the program. And that's where I came from with that.
The USDA has a calculator that we have to use, and that, this year, or for next year, the target is 2.94 as a weighted price. And that's typically mostly focused on the elementary school, so we felt that we needed to be somewhere in that area. We had some last-minute discussion around the $3.00 price and the psychological barrier to that, and certainly not opposed. None of this, by the way, is etched in stone. These are just our thoughts, and, you know, certainly open to discussion on that.
What's the, what's the variation in the price of the jockey hollow ones, going 3.75 to 4.25? What's the delta?
The higher meal is the boar's head, the higher price on the cold cuts. Boar's head's a higher quality of the meat, so it's a more expensive item to produce.
Do the kids know that?
Yeah, they do.
They do.
It's been, it's been regularly, I think, that high schools has always been a higher price point.
It's common to have tier pricing at schools. You know, we really thought that...
Okay, just wanted to make sure the kids understand when they're ordering a sandwich that they're getting this meat versus that meat.
They do. They do know. We only have boar's head.
I was going to say, there's no other option.
There's no other option.
Yeah.
Right, so you could have, you could have the pizza meal, for example, as one price, or if you wanted to have a premium item.
Okay, so 4.25 is for the boar's head sandwiches?
And premium items.
And 3.75 is for anything?
The basic lunch.
The basic lunch.
Pizza or whatever.
Yeah, basic, it's the hamburger, and the higher price points for the more upscale items.
Right, so if they actually have the USDA, or whatever they call it, you know, lunch, which comes with your meal, and then your different sides that are required under the healthy lunch program?
Yeah.
That would be the 3.75.
So they're just paying the premium, the 4.25 as a premium for...
The premium. The same at the high school. If you have your base lunch, which is the lunch, you're, you know, you're, you know, the healthy lunch, so to speak, that the federal government guidelines set up, well, that's 3.90. But anything else, you can see is a much higher price point. Anybody have any other questions?
The only other, one of the fees on that, rates and fees schedule, all the other ones, I think, have remained the same. And that particular one, with the exception of the substitute teachers, and that was presented in Jack's budget early in the year, $95 for our daily subs, 105 for permanent subs, going up $10, just to be more competitive with the other towns. And I think on that first tab there for rates and fees, also non-resident bus transportation, I think, went up 26.77.
Do we have anybody utilizing non-residents?
I don't know.
Yeah, I couldn't answer that either. We'd have to look, yeah, we'd have to look into that, yeah.
I don't think so. The tuition tab, next. The tuition, we adjusted based on how we were calculating out per pupil expenditures. So that's 17,846. That's based on the five-year per pupil expenditure average. So increasing from this year to next year, that's what that entails.
Right, so we made this align with the special ed spreadsheets that we had done, because in the past, these per pupil costs to outside use were the previous year's tuition per pupil. So on the receiving side, if we have something like a foster placement or other in-district tuition, we weren't getting the, a realistic amount that aligned with the actuals for the year.
And then on the final one, I think my battery's about to die, the final one, the facility fees, everything there is pretty much the same, with the exception of custodial charges. It used to be based on the custodian that was being used. It was very difficult to calculate out, because if you got Joe New Custodian versus the guy who's been there forever, the rates were all over the place. So we had taken an average a while back, and, you know, use that average to... And it was also easier for people using, renting the facilities, to know that I'm paying, you know, $48.00 an hour for overtime and $60.00 an hour if it's Sundays or holidays. The other change...
So it's one flat fee, no matter, it doesn't...
Exactly. It doesn't, it doesn't waver. So, yeah, we're not trying to figure out, well, who worked this day, and, you know, going back through and billing out on it. It's $48.00 an hour for overtime and $60.00 for Sundays and holidays. And the only other addition on here was the, you know, we have some camps in the summer that use the facility, especially like at Massey, we have a camp called Two for One. And they do, it's called Two for One. Life is too short for just one sport, so they use a whole bunch of different, you know, they'll use the field, they'll use the softball field, the turf field, the pool, whatever. If they paid these facility fees, they would never be able to run camps for our kids. So what we've done, I think it's aligned to what has been done in the past, was charge them a $100.00 fee, and then 12.5% of any revenue that they make. And besides that, everything else remains unchanged on that.
Alright. Anybody have any other questions? Are we voting on the fees later in the year?
Yeah, it's on the, through the new business.
Alright, so then, do you want to wait to have a discussion about cafeteria pricing until we're further in the agenda, or do you want to have that now? Anybody?
I'm okay with it, except I do think that elementary lunch, if we drop that to 2.95, that would be good. Other than that, it looks pretty reasonable in terms of increases. Some are, some are going up, some are not, right?
Yeah. Yeah, like, the base breakfast isn't going up at all. And some are going up small amounts, like 10 cents.
Yeah, I think most of them are reasonable. I think the suggestion about the elementary lunch, though, is...
Mm-hmm. What does everybody else think?
So the Massey A- lunch, if I read this right, is going to be 4.05?
No, I think it's 3.90, and that's 15 cents.
Plus 15?
No, that's up 15 cents.
Gotcha.
It went up 15 cents to 3.90.
Gotcha. Nope, then I'm set.
Is everybody good with...
What George said about the elementary as well?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, I agree too.
Alright, so we'll get to that then. Perfect. Alright, anything else, Jack?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to all business. We have the two policies up for second review. That is policy 3130, use of school facilities, and policy 6146, and those are graduation requirements. Do I have a motion to approve those policies as presented? Thank you, Jerry. Do you have a second? Thank you, Christine. Any discussion on those?
Nope.
Nope. Alright, all in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to item 10A, and that is going to be the approval of the 2019-20 rate fee schedule, tuition fees, and facility use fees. So do I have a motion to approve that with the change of dropping elementary school lunch to 2.95 from $3.00?
Yes.
All, everything else remains the same, but that goes to 2.95. Thank you, Shannon. Do I have a second? Thanks, Jerry. Any further discussion on these? Everybody else is okay with all the rest of the rates and everything?
Yeah, it's reasonable, yeah. Especially if there's been no rates of increase in the last three years.
Yeah, so we're all, everybody else... Yeah, so we're all, everybody else is good?
Mm-hmm.
All right?
Two ninety-five.
Then all in favor of approving that as presented with the change of elementary to two ninety-five? Great, thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to item B, which is our healthy certificate, food certification. So let's do the motion first, and we can discuss this, so everybody remembers what this is. Do I have a motion, um, not to participate in the state healthy food certification program? Thank you, Shannon. I'm second. Thank you. Christine, so, um, as everybody knows, um, the state requirements, it's all or nothing. So either you're all in, or you're all out. You can't have a hybrid of having elementary and middle school on the healthy certification program and having high school not on it. The high school is not on our federal nutrition program. So we either have to have the whole entire district on, or the whole entire district off. And we have always chosen to have the whole entire district off, so that we can do as we please in the high school, and not have to follow the federal requirements for the high school for lunch. So we would be doing the same thing, so that we are in compliance with the state and just not have anybody on. Does everybody understand that and have questions on that?
No. All the schools except the high school, though, right, are following the federal...
No, that, nobody will be on the state program.
Right, right.
The elementary and, and, um, middle school will stay, is on the federal nutrition program, and that does not affect federal nutrition program. This, just, and, and really, the state healthy food certification is really not a healthy food certification. It's sort, it's not healthy stuff.
No, that's my issue. It's, they're using, it's a healthy...
They're calling it healthy, but it's really not healthy.
No, exactly.
Yeah.
Why they do that, I don't know.
It's a misnomer, for sure.
Yeah. But yeah, so this will not affect our middle, elementary or middle school on our federal program.
So for federal, you can opt Masick out, and the other schools in. For state, it's all or none.
All or none.
So we're like, none.
Correct.
We're none.
Yeah. National School Lunch Program is the federal program.
Yes, it's the federal program, yeah.
I'm sorry, Joe.
The National School Lunch Program, that's the federal program.
Right, and that, and that you can do a hybrid, based on your schools.
And that's what we're doing, but, yeah.
And that's what we're doing, yes.
Yeah, note the state's non-healthy health thing.
Yeah.
Just find out, okay.
All right, any other further discussion? All in favor of the not participating in the state healthy food certification program? Great, thank you. Motion passes. Item two, authorized signatures, vote anticipated. Uh, motion, do I have a motion for the Monroe Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools, Jack Zamre, and the assistant superintendent, Joseph Cobza, as the authorized signers for the ED dash O ninety-nine Agreement for Child Nutrition Program and for re, related claims?
Frank, may I have a little bit to share on this? Do you want to explain a little bit of this, of that?
Yeah, because I don't think we've ever done, well, we need a motion.
We need a motion.
Sorry. Dee?
Who makes, do I have a motion?
Sure.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you. Yes, can you explain it? Because I don't remember us ever doing stuff like this before.
The, um, the actual wording, uh, it is a, a formal requirement of the state that there be a formal resolution at the end of this, tonight's meeting. We have the form all filled out, going to ask the secretary of the board to, uh, sign and certify that the board formally voted on that. There's a whole document that we got, very clear, that says the board has to formally vote on these signatures, and it's just, it's dealing with the food services programs, probably one of the most rigid programs of everything that we have to deal with is the food services. Um, the, the detailed requirement is phenomenal. So it, it's pro forma, but it is a requirement.
And have we been out of policy, uh, out of compliance with this policy? Because I don't remember us ever doing this one before.
Well, we've signed it. I'm sorry to, for, I was, I've signed it before as the secretary. I just think we probably didn't realize we needed to vote on, um, like, so Jack, Joe, and I, or whomever, you know, the...
Have always signed it.
Right, but I...
But it's never been a formal...
But we didn't have it as a vote in the...
You were signing it willy-nilly.
We were, we were going rogue.
We were rogue. Alrighty, well, let's get us in compliance then. Do I have any other further discussion on this? All right, all in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. Uh, item three, which is the amendment with Sedexo for the fourth year of operations. Do I have the motion resolved that the Monroe Board of Education hereby authorizes its